Hey Chief. I want to call to order the regular city council meeting of City Seabrook for Tuesday, April 2nd. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Constitution and the Constitution of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, public comments and announcements. We have a few people. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item's on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speaker shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that's not been placed on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly, into the microphone before making your comments. Jason?
Hello, Jason, 226 Waterway, Seabrook.
What's your last name, Jason?
Klein. I'm here to discuss the highway noise, and it's quite loud, and a lot of people seem to be using it as a racetrack because you can really hear, like, just like everyone just revving like crazy and like no one like, you know, cares for the speed limit at all. So that's kind of my concern. And I noticed that in other areas, when they create highways, as Tech Dot has done this, they've put grooves in the highway to reduce the noise. And I was curious if this highway was constructed in that manner. I've contacted Tech Dot to get the sound analysis report, but I have not received that. And the other thing I'm concerned about is, so you do have decimal limits for the city, and usually those decimal limits are kind of quite high when you compare it to how the buildings are constructed and how the levels of frequencies they actually dampen. So I just want to know if there's any plans to do any sound assessments regarding the highway, and if there's any plan to reduce the highway noise that affects this surrounding neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Berry?
Hello, everyone. I'm Natalie Berry. I live on 2225 Waterway, Seabrook, and I'm just supporting my friend and neighbor here because, as some of you already know, I'm very much interested in raising awareness for the protection of the environment, and I also hold a diploma in pollution and nuisance. And Highway 146 has been really, been very noisy lately since they just opened the new part of the expansion. So I would like to know if it would be possible to envision a solution, which I propose, if you would like to consider it, to put a speed limit at, for example, around McDonald's for all the vehicles that are driving, so that it could decrease the level of noise and also it could benefit the residents from having better quality sleep, especially at night. Sometimes I wake up around three or four after having slept four hours, and I cannot go back to sleep because of the noise. So I know that it affects not only me, but also some other residents in this area. And some people have no loss of hearing, so it's even worse for them. But I know for me, I have a mild hearing loss, but I can still hear it. So I would like to know if it would be possible to enforce as well a speeding limit that would be much better for the residents who live around because, for example, my bedroom has, is facing directly towards the highway. And I know that the houses that have two stories, the sound, the sound travels even faster through the air, so they are even more concerned because they can hear it even louder. So at least I have some trees, but I know that they have plans to remove, to destroy the whole wooden area there. I hope they will never do it because I am for the conservation of nature. But I know that maybe there's no possibility, and maybe it's not in your budget to build an expensive wall. So to build at least new, to put new signs, to increase the awareness, and maybe to enforce this law with raiders so that people would get maybe tickets, and maybe you would benefit from the money too, to do some other projects. So that was just my two cents in this. And I'm just saying thank you for everything you do for the City of Seabrook. I know that it looks great, but it has some side effects, and the quality of the sleep is very important, especially for the mood, for the health, and it can have detrimental consequences for everybody, especially young children or babies in the future if we continue having this high noises at night especially. So I thank you for all your patience with me, for listening to me. And if you have any questions or anything for further discussions, please let me know. And we are neighbors, so you can always contact me too. Thank you.
Thank you. 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and our members of city staff may make announcements about city community events.
All right. Upcoming events, the DF-95 Regional Championship. If you don't know what DF-95 is, you should take a look. Remote-controlled sailboats, it's pretty cool. It happens Friday, April 19th, to Sunday, April 21st, on Main Street in Old Seabrook. The Trail Adventure is Saturday, the 20th, 9:00 to 11:00 AM at Seabrook Wildlife and Refuge Park. The Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department has an open house Saturday, April 20th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Come on out and see what they do for us. I plan to stop by. SIS Leadership Development Core 5K, that is Saturday, April 27th, at Mater Park. National Take Back Day, that is Saturday, April 27. Make sure you have this on their calendar. It's from 10:00 to 2:00 PM to turn in unneeded medication for safe disposal. Please don't flush that stuff down the toilet, all that Tylenol that you have from 15 years ago and all that kind of stuff. Bring it by, drop it off here, and they'll take care of it. No questions, no silliness. Just come by, drop it off, and let's get it where it needs to be. Keels and Wheels, mark your calendar, Saturday, May 4th to Sunday, May 5th, at Lakewood Yacht Club. That's a show worth seeing. Is there anything I have missed?
Question, Rob. Do they take empty bottles for that disposal, or is it just pill bottles?
Empty bottles?
Yeah, empty.
I'm sure they could dispose of empty bottles as well. Primarily, it's to get rid of pills.
Okay.
The pills you're never going to take are the ones that are expired. I'll have a bag full, I'm sure, to bring over myself.
I was going to just give them to Joe.
All the old prescriptions that I never took, you know?
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Okay. 2.0 Presentations. 2.1, we have a proclamation declaring the month of April 2024 Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Seabrook. Whereas Sexual Awareness and Prevention Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community, whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in four women and one in 26 men will be sexually assaulted or attempted, or attempt sexual assault in their lifetime. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 through 17 are two and a half times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. Whereas one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college on campus. And whereas 95% of assaults on college campuses go unreported. Whereas only 25 out of every 1,000 perpetrators will ever see prison time. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Now therefore, in recognition of this important work done by domestic violence programs, I, Tom Kolupski, Mayor of Seabrook, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in a scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the Bay Area Turning Point to work toward an elimination of teen dating violence. Thank you. You have anything to add?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for declaring April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's actually Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month, which we are recognizing both. We read off some pretty alarming statistics, and Bay Area Turning Point is really dedicated to trying to bring an end to domestic violence, sexual assault, teen dating violence, child abuse. That's actually my job, my department. I always joke, but it's not really a joke. My job is to try to put us out of the jobs because we won't need these services at some point. But while we do, we do ask for your support. We do have a couple of events coming up this month. Those can be all found on our website at barryatturningpoint.org. But I do want to highlight one event that we have coming up next week, which is actually right here in Seabrook over at Clear Lake Park. It's our Light Up the Night event. This will consist of a walk. We have grilled hamburgers and hot dogs. We've got a canine unit coming out from League City PD to do a demonstration. We've got lots of games, fun activities. And really what we're trying to do with this event is try to bring light to a very dark subject, and really bring community together in order to start these conversations and take action against domestic violence and sexual assault. So thank you. I do have flyers. I have ribbons for y'all. Now we'll pass those out. Can we get a picture?
Come on, guys.
I'm aware. I'm aware. Okay. One, two, three.
Can we get one with Mike's name on it?
Sure, we'll pass that. Yeah. Thank you. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 3.0, the consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2024 city council meeting. 2.2, consider to take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance 2024-10, modifying the civil service classification system for the Seabrook Police Department.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 4.0, bid awards. 4.1, consider to take all appropriate action on bid award and execution of contract to RFP 2023-27-318 Fiber Infrastructure NASA for designs, supply integration, installation, and commissioning of fiber optic lines with Gulf Coast Fiber Services, the amount not to exceed $481,373.50, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents.
Thank you. 4.1 consists of a fiber project that will continue the city's looped fiber, which is currently a single feed from here at City Hall down to Red Bluff near Public Works. This will continue that loop to the other side of 146 and back up Nasser Road 1, close to the water tower on Repstorff. So in the event that this line is ever severed, there'll be another feed from another direction to keep us in operation. We've had some breaks in that line over the past year or so by contractors that put us in a very bad position while that fiber was down. So having this second feed to make it a complete loop will be critical. Staff recommend approval of the contract.
So the original feed, Kevin, was from the bond issue?
That's correct.
But this is above and beyond the bond?
Yes.
So what is this feeding?
Currently, it'll feed the network that controls our city's internet connectivity back to water facilities, sewer facilities, sewer plant. We can control pumps. We can monitor all of our SCADA through it, and it's a secure network. So currently, we have that network on a small majority of our facilities. Other than that, we'll have SIM cards that report back, which are pretty reliable outside of the event that hurricane or something takes out a cell tower, then that communication is lost. So fiber being buried is much more reliable. So to answer your question...
So this is instead of or with Wi-Fi?
We have the ability to have SIM cards as a backup in the event that the line is severed and we can't put it back quickly. So we do have those as a backup through SIM cards and cell towers to be able to communicate.
And can this be expanded to residential?
No. No, this is an enclosed city network.
So not even the main artery cannot eventually go to residential?
No, I don't think Jimmy would promote that. Really, we wanted this to be a secured by the IT department here at Seabrook and not have that open to the public.
Thank you. Although, Tom, Verizon is putting in fiber throughout the city right now. They dug up all the yards right now, all around town.
Well, certainly I thought that they had started that, but the issue is, we're only as good as, you know, in other words, if we're trying to get the coaxial, I mean, you can't really define what a coaxial can get into your houses anyway. I'm just curious.
Well, eventually we'll be able to. Anyway, if the backbone's there, they can. Anyway, I just, this is an enclosed network for city services.
It's secure.
Yeah.
I got it. Thank you.
So do we hear a motion?
Move to approve 4.1.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous, thanks. 4.2, consider to take all appropriate action on a bid award and execution of a contract for RFP 2024-341, sidewalk removal and replacement project for an on-call maintenance contract for fiscal year 2023-24 with Craycon Incorporated, any amount not to exceed $100,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents.
In our most recent budget session, council approved the funds to move forward with contracts with outside vendors to assist with replacement of damaged sidewalks throughout the city. This is an ongoing line item that we have each year, but we do like to go out each year and look for the best bid. So again, we did that this year. Four proposals were submitted, went through the proposals, staff rated them. This particular contractor we've worked with in the past, and we feel confident we'll be able to do quite a bit of sidewalk for the amount of budget that's provided. So staff's recommendation is to move forward with Craycon for this contract.
Questions? Do we hear a motion?
Move to approve 4.2.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 4.3, consider to take all appropriate action on bid award and execution of a contract for RFP 2024-02-334, Red Oak Area Subdivision Waterline to Bulge Construction LLC, not to exceed $516,572.
So as an ongoing project for Seabrook, we look to replace what we call AC water lines throughout the city and replace those lines with more durable PVC lines. Most recently, we worked over in Shady Lake along Red Bluff, so continuing in this area to remove that type of pipe and upgrade it to the new PVC lines. We solicited bids for the project within Red Oak Acres. 16 bids were received. There was a lot of interest in this project. The particular contractor that was recommended by the design engineer we've worked with in the past, they've had some other projects within our area in looking at their references. So of the 16 bids, Bulge was selected, the lowest bid at $516,000, outside of an outlier bid at $1.2 million. The next lowest bid was $587. All the line items were looked at, and recommendation came back for Bulge Construction to move forward with this project. So staff's recommendation is to select Bulge and approve this bid.
I did have several concerned residents of Red Oak Acres with, has this company worked with residential? Will they have big equipment? Will they be digging up the driveways? And I just wanted to go on record to say Kevin's answered all those questions. And they won't be going through the driveways. They'll be going, how'd you say it?
This is a directional drill project, so the idea is to open different bore pits and bore the line underground. It's less intrusive to the residents. This is going to be along the road right away, so it'll be outside of city property, or residential properties, but within city right away. It's, directional drilling is trenchless, so it's a lot less damaging, a lot less excavation. What we typically see is, this one may have a little more because it's curvy type roadway, but 100 feet or longer of a bore pit, and then they'll shoot from that pit to the next one and then cover up those holes. They'll need to go back and make small excavations for the service lines to the homes, that kind of thing. But most of the work is trenchless, so it's ideal for us and for the contractor. It's easy cleanup, and they typically tend to go faster. Driveways, to answer your question, will be bored under so as not to disturb the driveways. There'll be a line item within the project that any damages that occur due to the contractors will be repaired by the contractor.
Okay, that's wonderful. Also, just want to make a comment that if we could please communicate with the residents on whoever we decide before, which Kevin said that they will be sending out notices. So just wanted to keep them informed because, you know, we've already had issues here. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve 4.3.
Second. I mean, if the residents don't want it, new water lines, we can take care of that too. All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kevin. 5.0, new business. 5.1, consider to take all appropriate action on approval of professional services agreement between the City of Seabrook and Brown Reynolds Watford Architects. For architectural services, the amount not to exceed $264,000, and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents. This project is part of the 2023 Bond Program. Discussion? Hear a motion?
Motion to approve 5.1.
Second. All in favor? 5.2, consider to take all appropriate action on amendment to the Public Safety Fund budget, including an additional $7,215.49 for additional equipment for the Seabrook Police Department and Seabrook Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're coming to you with an amendment of $7,215.49 additional funding from the Public Safety Fund to, for Public Works, there's a controller for the new message board that they purchased that we left off on the original purchase, and that helps them to control the message board. You can do it off your phone, remote locations, and things like that. And then the one for PD, the two Polaris Rangers that we had ordered, those two with the original Houston Motorsports over in North Houston didn't have those anymore, so we found another Houston Motorsports closer. They didn't have the two units that we had originally got, wanted, so one of them is different, adding the steering, power steering to one of them, and then we didn't want Chief to burn his head out there without a roof on it, so we got poly roofs put on them. So that's what we're asking for tonight.
With the addition that we asked for, we'll have a reserve balance of $138,594.
I do have one thing. On the existing Polaris's right now, they say P-L-I-C-E, they're missing an O, one's missing an E, so I'd like to have...
Can I get some funding for that too?
Yeah, could we?
Change that.
I have $3.33 with me. I'll add that too. Thank you. We wait until each year to come up with our list, but, and you come before council, but is, you know, it seems like during the year, these things come up.
Yes, sir.
And yet we wait a whole year. We got the account there. Why can't we just go ahead and spend it? You know, there's things that you need that come up, but we wait a whole year before we fund this.
This was before me.
I know.
So it could be something we could look at to address.
Yeah, well, it's not a bank, you know?
No, sorry, we can't.
Let's spend it.
I didn't mess with, I didn't talk to our accountant first. We'll have to, we'll have to have closed-door discussion.
Is there...
There's a policy.
Is...
Yeah, there is a policy.
Correct. So, but is there a minimum we have to keep in it? Or percentage-wise, or? No.
Sorry. I can't pick you up.
We are required to keep 10% of the annual revenue.
Okay.
So do we have to keep... So do we have to keep all 138,000? No, but-
Well, it just seems that there's things-
But the balance had been over 200,000 and council approved-
Right.
-funding the study for the new police building as well as the new EMS building out of that fund.
But it's replenished monthly.
It does. It brings in about 100,000 a year.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I was just wondering why we wait until yearly to make the request.
It's in January, doesn't it?
Yeah. So when they created that fund, they said that we would not set the budget or approve the budget until January. So that was to, so that we weren't using it for operations and maintenance, I think was the intent behind that.
Okay.
Before my time as well, but that was the reason.
All right. Well, you can't spend it then.
So question to you, Tom. So are you saying, because I think we're on the same page here, you're saying if they needed a Polaris, they should be able to just go out and buy a Polaris for 7,000 bucks without having to come through a-
Well, they still have to come to us, but I'm saying, why wait until January?
There you go. I kind of agree.
On a wish list.
Yeah, there you go.
And if, and if there's things out there that, you know, we need desperately, then go ahead and buy it. I'm not, I'm, when there's so much money in an account, I get concerned that we think it's a bank and we're saving money. It's not a savings account.
Yes, sir.
It's there, it's there to spend, and it's replenished, so I'm not too worried about it going bankrupt.
Right.
Mike is, but I'm not. All right, that's fine. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
5.3, consider and take all appropriate action regarding flying the existing PVC pole American flags all year long on Main Street at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial.
Okay, a little add to that is, there is a metal pole, the PVC is covering the metal pole, just for looks, but anyhow, I see this, and I actually pulled up, I know Kevin, you use the, that place over in Pasadena. There's a place that has flags, I pulled up today, it was actually sent to me, and they have flags at a 27% discount right now for $18.95. American-made flags, nylon with the brass grommets, made really well, I've seen them before, with the embroidered stars. So it's one of those things where these deals are on, it says for a limited time, but this ad's been up there for a month. So my point is, we could find them even cheaper to replace them. So I think we could actually make that bill go down. But anyway, the other question Tom had a couple weeks ago when this first came up was, go do fly them at night. Well, we already fly those six times a year for about two weeks at a time at night. And I went out there and really looked at it again, and I was like, okay, because it actually says in the regs for, you know, being in an honor guard, if, would a reasonable person see a flag at night, and if there's enough ambient light, know that it's an American flag? Well, not only can you see that it's an American flag, you actually can see the colors. So there's that much light. So you can see the blue field is blue, the red stripes are red, the white is white. You can see that clearly. There's nine streetlights out there, and then the memorial lights actually reflect off the granite and then come back toward the street. So there's plenty of light there for those 20 flags. Because that's all that Jack Friday was talking about, was just those 20 flags. If there's any other flags that ever go up, they're only there the six times a year for the two weeks at a time. But these 20 would stay at all times. So any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, 5.3.
Second. All in favor? Great. 6.0, old business. 6.1, discuss, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance 2024-06. A request to amend the Seabrook City Code, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article 3, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regulations by modifying the supplementary regulations to include the addition of tents and lean to as a prohibitive temporary structure to be used for onsite dwelling purposes. Sean.
Gail, will you bring up my screen, please?
Good evening, mayor and council. So originally, when we discussed this at the last meeting, there was a motion to remove the word temporary from structures. After going back and looking at it and to modify the ordinance, we can't remove the word temporary. If you remove the word temporary, it basically states that we can't have any structures within the city as dwelling units. So this ordinance was drafted, and if you look at the language up here, you have no temporary structures, and then if you take out the examples of temporary structures, may be used for onsite dwelling purposes. So originally how it's written, it, this, without the examples, it just prohibits any type of temporary structures being used as a dwelling unit. And then we got examples. If we took out the word temporary, it would just say no structures, and if you ignore all this examples, it would say may be used as onsite dwelling purposes. So staff would recommend that you would leave the word temporary into the ordinance, and we're looking for a motion to approve the second reading with, probably with the statement just as written, because we've never modified or changed it from the original version that you recommended during first round.
Okay. Do you hear a motion? All right.
Pro 6.1. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks. 7.0, discussion. 7.1, discussion of city-funded advertising program for hotel logo signage on State Highway 146 with Lone Star logos for main lanes and ramps. Mike?
So now that the freeway's done, as you guys know, a lot of the hotels have been, their businesses hindered severely during the construction. So as you know, when you guys travel, this is, you see these signs throughout the highways. Well, this is what we'd like to do for our residents. We reached out, me and Gail reached out, really Gail emailed them. She only got a few responses back. Got a couple of them that called me, and they were pretty adamant about wanting us to use the hot tax fund to pay for this. The hot tax fund is exactly for this purpose. It's marketing, advertising for them, so to get, you know, the people know where to get off for the hotels. So it's quite expensive, that's the only thing. When we were in Webster, when I was in Webster, the city paid for it as well. They still do. It was 1,200 a year. It has actually risen significantly. It's now like 4,200 for each logo. But there's like 17 or 18 cities in the state of Texas that pay for hotels, Gail, in the area?
Yeah, about 13 is-
Oh, 13. So normally, it's the ones, the cities that are by a highway, so you know where to get off for the hotels. So wanted to bring this to council because I definitely think this is a plus for the hotels, and again, that's what hot tax is for. So I'd like to propose that we pay for it, because most of them are not going to want to pay a percentage or what have you. And I know we've talked about, I mean, me and Tom talked about if the franchise sells or the changes flags, I don't recall what the change would be for something like that.
I think the panels are about $150.
Okay.
How much?
150. 150 to get fabricated.
So we could also get that possibly paid for by the franchise instead of us if they change the flag. That may be something, you know, we could do the initial yearly fees, but, so I'm bringing it to council to, for discussion, so.
So they charge 4,200 just to keep it up there every year?
Absolutely.
That is crazy.
Yeah.
And I would like to see, I'm sorry, Rob, I'd like to see all of our businesses do this, food, lodging, hotels. I would be, I would support 50% funded by the city, half by the city and half by the business, and for all of them, in my opinion.
Well, you can't, you can't do all businesses. You can only do hotels, that-
Well, we could do hotels out of hot funds and do the others out of EDC money. Right?
There's showing restaurants on that sign you just brought in.
Yeah, but I think the restaurants paid on their own, correct? If I'm understanding, I think it's just a-
Yeah, so this third party will go out to all the businesses once the highway's fully complete.
Right.
They'll solicit, basically like they've done with the city, here's the cost, if you wanted northbound, southbound ramps, here's the menu and the selection, if you want that type of advertising. So they're going to reach out to all the businesses because they're contracted by Tech dot as a third party to do it.
So a third party does the sales job with all the local businesses. The total cost, according to the handout there, is based on traffic count, and I can't imagine that we would get to 150,000 cars a day here. I don't know what our traffic count is anticipated on the new road. I really don't see a reason not to support this. I am hesitant to pay 100%, but hesitant not overtly against it.
Is it $4,200 per image?
Per hotel, correct.
Per each, each one?
That's not what the flyer says.
That's what I-
So we contacted the third party, I know it's a little confusing on second page there, but 4,200 is for northbound panel, a southbound panel, and then exit ramps and fabrication and installation. So for one business per year.
It'd be $4,200.
Yeah, considering some of the things that we spent our hot tax on, I think this will be money well spent.
Absolutely. And that's what the owners are saying as well, excuse me.
Yeah, and the other thing too is when you're sailing down, coming from the north on 146, you got one shot. If you don't make that one shot, you're in chemo and you're down on 96. So I, I think it'd be good, 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 good money well spent for our hot tax.
I absolutely agree with that. My concern is hotels only, right? So when we get, if we pay 100% every Airbnb in town, since they're a residential business, a short-term resident, how does that work out? I just want to be sure that if we say we're going to pay 100%, we don't have every Airbnb in that kind of thing saying, you need to advertise us too. If you're doing it for them, you have to do it for us. I want to support it. I just want to scope it and see exactly what it's going to do to our hot tax income.
Well, we could say chain-type hotels, I mean, we can, we make those rules and all. But, you know.
Well, we can't say we're going to support La Quinta, but not eight.
You can't not support an independent. I mean, that wouldn't be right either.
So we're going to make it available to hotels in the city. Is it hotels? Just scoping that to see exactly who would be eligible and being able to justify that eligibility?
The BNB's, BNB's pay hot tax.
Yeah, good point. That's, I forgot about that.
We also talked about that as well.
No, because we're, aren't our Airbnbs now paying hot tax?
Yes, I was going to say, it would be a policy to-
So we don't say anybody that pays hot tax.
We're using hot tax though. They're paying into it.
Well, right, but they don't make enough money to fund something like this. Their return on investment is, that's what we-
They're not, we're paying zero for it. They're paying zero for it if we fund it. Why wouldn't they? That's like, that looks like a-
It's, Mike, I know where you're coming from on this, but let's just make sure we think through it all the way through and that we have it clearly done. My thought was 10% from whoever wants to put it up there, because that will, that will eliminate the Airbnb saying, hey, I pay hot tax, I should be up there too, if you want to.
Yep. I think the biggest difference is that the hotel, you can drive off the freeway, drive into the lobby, oh, not drive in the lobby, but drive up, walk in the lobby, get a room. Airbnbs, you're not going to be able to do that.
Right.
And so I think if we think it through, we can, you know, limit it to the hotels with lobbies that you can come up and get a room that night, as opposed to Airbnbs where you have to make, you know.
Well, that's a good point. I personally don't think that in today's market, that people don't make reservations in advance. They know where they're going. They're not driving down a highway and saying, jeez, I'm tired, I'm going to stop here. This is only a trip from Houston to Galveston, essentially.
Well, if you're going to do the Airbnbs, you're going to have, what, 50 of them up there?
Yeah, there's no way.
It just makes it impractical.
But couldn't we also decide, okay, well, they have to have at least a minimum amount of beds?
There you go.
And it could be 50, 75, whatever it is that we determine is a reasonable amount, and that would be how we could qualify them.
I can reach out to Scott Joslow and see what their, because every city has these, most of the ones from the freeway, and they only have named brands like you were saying that, that are doing that. And those cities typically pay out of their hot tax, and they don't have the problem of the Airbnbs and bed and breakfast and stuff like that. So we'll do some more research.
I just need to be able to fully explain a decision when a decision is made.
Yeah.
I, Mike, you know I want this to happen.
Yeah.
But I need to fully explain it, be able to fully explain it to our constituents.
Right.
And fully understand what we're voting for.
So we have 10 hotels, it's 42 grand a year out of, which events are we going to cancel?
And how many, how many hotels do we have?
About seven.
Okay. About seven for sure?
Six, if that, is that one that's still in bankruptcy? Six.
Okay. I mean, and these Airbnbs, they don't have lobbies. They don't have, you know, if they don't have it somewhere over you, again, what Buddy said, I agree with that. If they're not somebody that you can walk in and get a room, ever, any day, then they don't need to be on this sign.
I don't think that would be an issue. A lot of other cities have already solved that problem, if it's even a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. The other question is, what's our annual hot tax income? And how big a bite does this take out of it? And figuring out what's left and what we can do with it, absolutely supportive. Let's fully understand it. Once we fully understand it, then we can vote for it and go on and make it happen.
Would it be possible to get some models to see what others have done, and let's table this for tonight?
Yeah, if you read down, it says lodging. To be eligible, to have a business logo placed, a specific logo signed, carrying the legend lodging, a commercial establishment must provide a license or other evidence of compliance with laws, regulating facilities providing lodges if required by law, a minimum of 10 guest rooms, which provides sleeping accommodations and a telephone access to the public. So each room would have to have a telephone.
Yeah, and $4,200 could buy 85 American flags, so.
So this, if y'all haven't done the math, it's 25,000 a year for the six. I support this as well, but I definitely think we need to touch on the other businesses, the food and the gas. And can we not fund that out of EDC?
Be an EDC policy if they wanted to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think that's going to-
I don't see, I don't think we'd get to see the return on our investment for a driveway.
No. You'd have to, if you're going to go for EDC, you're going to have to make the presentation in terms, for this investment, this is what your expected return is.
Are we doing that for the hotels?
Are you talking about for the signage?
Yeah.
Signage would be hot tax, which is different from EDC.
Right, right, I know that. But I'm saying, we could fund it. We have like $4 million in there, don't we? Right?
I think what really, what we need to do is get this defined by-
EDC, ask that question.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a project, they have some advertising, have a cap on how much they can spend for advertising. I think the bigger question would be, we typically have restaurants that come and go, so the length, setting a whole policy of, you know, new restaurant moves in, do you automatically renew that? That could get quite costly. So we'd, we'd have to model something based on how many businesses we have, how far out from the highway do you go? Because we have hundreds.
And how many signs would you have to have to do with that?
Well, maybe we do a 50% sponsorship on that then, you know, not 100% since we aren't really paying for this, since it's coming out of hot tax on hotels.
I think there's more of a drive, if we're doing it for advertisement, to draw people off the highway into Seabrook. It's really a restaurant or issue, in my opinion. Those are the people that'll stop. I really don't think that people are going to be driving down the highway to Galveston and say, I'm going to stop at Holiday Inn. They have that reserved already. So where's the advertising budget that's going to say, you know, yeah, I'm just going to drop in tonight? That doesn't happen.
It does happen, Tom. We, we used to track it, and when I was in Webster, we tracked it because we wanted to see how much-
Webster, nobody stays in Webster.
Well, I know.
They need something like that.
They need something like that.
Well, also, we, you know, again, how many miles away are the six hotels? Because I'm trying to even think, we have six, I mean, you know-
Anyway, yeah, you don't, you don't go too far.
I've never stayed in any of them, I guess.
Okay, so just to be clear, to be able to vote and approve this, we would need, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, we need anticipated hot tax revenue, anticipated cost against that hot tax revenue. And that would be apply only to the hotels. Anything apart from hotels would be a completely separate discussion, a completely separate vote. But I would like to get signs on the highway. I would like to get something up there. So if we can answer those questions, then we can have a good solid discussion about the impact of doing this and put it to vote and make something happen.
Yep. That's why I was just bringing it to-
Gail, do we have the anticipated, or Mike, the hot tax? Or just give us a roundabout ballpark?
About $538,000 is in your budget, is what we get annually.
But how we're already committed to spending is the other issue.
Right, so we have a couple of personnel out of that. We have, you know, all the line items that are in our typical budgets are also in your hot budget as well. Some of the savings that we looked at, we are not spending as much on the festival that we have been in the past. So there's a little bit of surplus there. When I was speaking with Mike, it's probably 20 to 30,000 dollars when we put the budget together, we probably have in that line item if we don't start increasing the festival at any rate.
Well, why don't we come back with a definitive proposal? X number of hotels at X number of dollars, these are the hotels, and, you know, this is what qualified them for getting a sign. And then we could, you know, have that discussion. And then Jackie, like Rob said, for other businesses, take that up in a separate-
Let's also add one other point. If you're going to allow other businesses to advertise, we may have to figure a way to limit other restaurants, marinas and so forth-
Absolutely.
That are also going to want, we probably need to address that as we are addressing this as well.
Very good.
That's why we do this in isolation, hotels. And we can get this passed and move forward and give us time to deal with everything else.
We're not going to put your construction- And, and if we, and if we start down that path, the cost to the city, if we're funding 100% of this, is going to break our budget.
That's what we have to understand. Because right now, we don't, for hotels, it's out of hot tax. So we need, we need to see what is available in hot. The horse, the dead horse is well beaten at this point.
Is this, is this the only option of company? Is, is this the only person that does this?
Yeah, the state contracts with them.
Contracts with them. Yep.
Okay, so what's the directive to the city? Okay.
Motion to table. Oh, just kidding.
Just a discussion.
Yeah, it's just a discussion. No, but we need to give some, we need to give direction to the city yet. So you're okay, Gail?
Right, so if I'm understanding, I'll come back, we'll have definitive costs for the six or possibly seven hotels. We'll put that into the forecasting model for the funds that we have and the anticipated budget and hot funds, and you can look at what the impacts would be.
All right. Seven point two, discussion of the Seabrook Economic Development Services Agreement and administrative services provided by the Economic Development Corporation.
Okay, I put this on the agenda because I wanted to discuss with you guys to kind of get your pulse on things. That last EDC council meeting that we had together, the, I can't remember the lady's name, but the, the lady who was in charge of it, she was, seemed pretty shocked that our city manager was doing both positions. And it makes a lot of sense, I mean, it's a lot of, of, it's a big role to fill. And right, everybody's been waiting on this 146 construction to finish before their, you know, that's what we all been heard, you know, that the businesses are waiting to see what's, what it's going to look like when it's all done and where, you know, just get all this construction done before they bring in their stuff. Well, now's the time. Now's the time where we need to get the businesses back that facilitate our current residents, or we got to revamp some of our current businesses. And I think it deserves its own position. I know we're saving $300,000 because we took out those two positions, but now's not the time to cut back on that, in my opinion. I think it needs a separate position. What are your thoughts?
Okay, one of the things that we discussed at EDC over the past couple of years, and, and the director of EDC and, and the role and, and activities he was involved in, is one is that, and the most important part of it is, is that for every commercial space that we have in town, for every building, whatever, that's trying to, to locate a business, they have got their own group of marketers that are out there. So if you go up to the Shell Station and you've got people there that are marketing that, same thing in front of the towers, Seabrook Center, et cetera, Miramar. And they're the ones that are going to find the business to come in. And if, and the, and the other thing too, if Gail feels that she's overloaded and this is too much of a responsibility, then this becomes a personnel matter, and I would look for her to step up and say, hey, this is too much for me, I can't do it all. But the one reason that we, we pretty much supported the elimination of a director of economic development is it's the same thing over and over and over again. Going to trade shows, going here, there, and y'all, and saying, here's Seabrook. But now with the internet, you can plug in and you will see what's missing, what's not, your nearest location to another Whataburger, et cetera. And the models that the businesses are using are so sophisticated that they can assess Seabrook in a heartbeat and say, this is what we want to do and this is what we don't want to do. And that's what we were learning over the last years. So again, if Gail feels she's overloaded, then I would want her to step up and say, this is what I need and this is the help that I need.
I think waiting on, on marketing people to come and tell us when they're going to be ready to build a whatever in, in these commercial spaces is not doing the EDC job. We need to be contacting these people and what, and-
Exactly right. Council, council needs to be contacting those people. You, your job is to promote the city.
I am definitely trying.
Okay, well, I think we all are, so, yes, that, that's, that's, you know, part of the issue.
Okay, Gail, what, can you just tell me the last businesses that you've been out to that are current businesses, that you've asked them, what can you do for them? Can you name five?
Jackie, I don't know if, right now, I, you're getting off topic, I believe. I think what you're asking-
I'm trying to see that this is too much for you, is what my, I mean, I know it's-
I understand, but I don't, it's an evaluation. I think we're trying to figure out if the direction from the council on this.
I'm asking if you have contacted businesses and that's, you can't answer that? Because that's, it's the position that you're holding.
We, I make daily contacts. I mean, we have people that are contacting us all the time via email and, I mean, am I going out? No, I have not gone out to businesses this week.
You've contacted some businesses?
I, I'm in communication with businesses, yes.
Can you name a few for me? I just don't believe that that's happening. I just don't believe it's happening. I think that, that-
Okay, but there's-
I'm not saying it's a lot, I'm asking if, what names some businesses?
But there's, there's two things. I don't know if it's happening, but I have never been on EDC. EDC, no disrespect to Buddy, he is the one here that has been on EDC. If EDC comes back and says they want the support, that, that, hey, we need more people going out and meeting businesses in their, in, in their locations, then EDC should come to us and say, hey, we need that position back. But the idea, my understanding of EDC is they are supposed to develop and bring in new businesses. So the question's to Gail about, have you gone out and talked to our current businesses?
That's also part of it, a huge part of it.
Well, what do, what is our EDC task to do?
In general?
And what is their, what is their charter and how they're developed and what they're supposed to be doing? I'm not, I'm not entirely clear on it all right now. But until EDC is clear on it, it's their job. So if EDC comes back and says, hey, we need that position reinstated, I would absolutely listen into it, but-
Part of, part of the issue that we have right now is that we have very little land to develop. The land that's already vacant, that was vacated by the widening of 146, is small, and everybody is well aware, all of the businesses that have contacted us and we've contacted, are well aware that those are the places that are left in the city. The bigger developments, the Margaritaville, they're marketing their own retail. The Edge is marketing their own retail. Other than those two vacant places, the few places that are vacant along 146, and they're all on the east side because the west side isn't developable because everybody comes out in droves whenever we try and bring something into the east side or the west side of 146, they don't want anything built there.
No, they do, they want a grocery store.
Which is available. But nobody in Lake Cove wants anything built up against their houses. So if you look at down 146, there is very, very little space to put anything, period. There's nothing on Nasser Road 1. All of those properties are, are looked at, taken. There is some redevelopment that we're trying to bring in, but there isn't new business locations that are great. We're trying to fill the plaza over it, over in front of the, the apartment building, the commons. But again, there, show me where a building can go, a new business can go, and we'll hustle on it. But that's, that's why we decided that we're paying that $300,000 a year to market five properties. That doesn't make sense.
Well, I was at that meeting that morning, and I think this is what Jackie's trying to ask. I don't know if she, it came across that way, but when we talked about all the, the, you know, the very limited locations for new businesses, around the traffic circle, there's a couple pieces of land, but not much, you know what I'm saying? And there's just not a lot of land, we understand that. But then, then the last half of that morning session, she brought up about going to the existing businesses and talking to them about making sure that they stay and don't go somewhere else. That was one of the things, and I think that's what Jackie was trying to ask about, you know, like, okay, we have existing businesses, like Tuckey's Hamburgers, I know they left. We want them to come back, but he's talking about-
Talking to Barry once a week.
Yeah, so, and, but at the same time, you know, like that, that gun guy left that was like, you know, Laredo's, they're not coming back because there's no place for them. So, but the existing businesses that are here, this is what she said, I haven't said this, it was that lady that came, she was the one that was saying, someone from ED, EDC should be going to them to make sure that they stay and that they're not courted or recruited by another city to leave here to go there. That's, that's what I think she's trying to ask.
Well, one of the things too, that you have to consider is when you start reaching into a business and say, how can I help you? And they start looking to you to give them advice. Once you start giving them advice and start working their business plan, you bought into it, you have liability. And, and that's one thing that the city needs to stay out of business. Governments needs to stay out of business. If somebody needs help for a driveway or something like that, they can come in and make the request. But as far as going in and, and-
Do they know that? Do they know that? Any community?
Yep, they all know.
Oh, yes. Any business I've gone into, it seems like no, not really, the city's never been by.
Well, again, if you go in and you say, what can I do to help you?
Well, not that, that exact way. I'm not saying, here's my checkbook, you know, no. But just say, how you doing, what's going on, let's, how's business? And that's the conversation and get it started, see, you know, what their needs are.
Joe does that every week, every day.
Yes.
And, and we all should. Those discussions are why I'm excited about the signage thing that, that Mike brought up. Because people don't know what's in old Seabrook. And you can't see it driving by on the highway. And, and in my opinion, we have to do what we can to support those businesses, but that doesn't mean knocking on the door and saying what do you need. It's saying, hey, we have a new initiative for signage, would you like to buy into it? We have this initiative for whatever, a craft fair or something like that.
I did say the wrong word, I didn't, it's just how you, what do you need? I shouldn't have said that, but that's, I'm just saying, having a relationship, I don't think that's currently happening. Starting with that.
Economic development is, is, well, near and dear to me, especially in this town. But, but again, I think, I think we've done, we've set the groundwork. And, and when, when Paul was here, Paul did set the groundwork. I mean, we, we talked to businesses, especially during COVID, went into every single business in this town and, and, and asked them, what do they need? They're still here. That was the time they needed the help. You know, I, I think that, that at this point, you know, the ones that are here are well-established. They're, they're trucking along good. Maybe not the hotels, but, you know, some of them aren't run the way they should be. But, but again, I mean, if they're, if a hotel is failing, it typically isn't, isn't the fact that it's the city's fault. And, and so, you know, management has a big thing to do with it. It's not the city. So again, we're, we're pushing the vacant land as hard as we can every day, at least I am. And, and, you know, we, we, there's a lot of prospects, Gail, Gail has seen prospects come through the door. People want to be here. But the big brokers are out there marketing the city for us. Red News is still there, doing all the, all the, all the, all the work for us. And so, you know, it, it didn't make sense to spend that kind of money on a director to market so little that we have. You know, I, if Gail needs an assistant, you know, that's, that's one thing. If, I, I just can't see a full-time person. I mean, if she, if she, if she needs some assistant to go knock on business doors for a couple times, but that's up to Gail. If she, if she wants that, I think EDC would be more than happy to do it. I had a discussion with Dunphy, he couldn't make it tonight because he was in Dallas. His plane was delayed in Dallas, so he couldn't make this meeting. But, but he said, he told me the same thing. He said, I, I see no need to do that. Those are out of his mouth. Any more discussion on that one? Do we want to, do we want to direct something? I mean-
I just wanted to have a conversation with you guys, so I think you answered my, or I've gotten it.
Okay, seven point three, discuss an update regarding the appointment of members to the Charter Review Commission.
Mayor and council, this is on the agenda because I would like to get a little bit of direction on how you would like to proceed. In front of you, you have a list of our current applicants for the Charter Review Commission. We currently have eight applicants. We need seven people for that commission. So at this point, the plan is to get all of their applications out to you guys so you can start considering those. I just want to remind you of the timeline that was presented a couple of meetings ago. We really need to have this commission in place and appointed by our next meeting on the 16th. That would make things work well. They're a six-month commission, and so we want to get this done and ready so that we can start meeting our election deadlines associated with anything that might come up. So, so the, the plan right now is to get these applications out to you guys for consideration and then bring it before you and basically vote one by one. And the people who get the most votes are, are appointed to the position. Now, if you want to handle it a different way, I just need to hear what you want to do. Make sure you're on the same page on how we want to proceed.
So when is the actual deadline on getting applicants?
There, it would be up until appointment honestly, which would be me filtering anything that came to you after, after these. I would continue to filter those to you until we meet to a point. And I would be in contact with those applicants as well, to let them know the plan for appointment would be on April 16th, so that they'll know, you know.
Terry, the guy that comes all the time, what's his last name again? Always forget. They, he and his wife come to council all the time?
Yeah.
He, he's, he's my, I talked to him the other day.
Okay.
At a local restaurant that I was promoting, so. And also, there's a guy that lives in Seabrook Island who wanted to run for something before, he's from Canada. We were talking about hockey, Buddy remembers that guy because we interviewed him. He wants to be on it too. So those are my two guys.
So Rachel, if we're going to vote on it, however the process of voting is, I don't care, as long as preferably it has- care, as long as, preferably it happens on the sixteenth, so that we're not under significant pressure to complete that six-month timeline. It's taken up to eight months before, so. What is the timeline that you need in order to get a completed application to us, if we're going to vote on all the filled applications on the sixteenth?
Okay, so, I have these eight that I could send out to all of you tomorrow. If you have two more people, the quicker they get those in, the better, because again, I'll be filtering those out to you as they come in. If we have.
The, the, the question really is, if somebody sends in an application at 5:30 on the sixteenth, is that too late? Well, probably so. So.
Can we like do this Friday?
Where is the line that, that they can draw? I, I would suggest a week from today.
If you want to set a deadline, I can communicate that, for sure.
You're the one who has to do the work. So, I, I don't want to dictate to you how long you have to do that.
Well, honestly, I, I will shoot those out as soon as they come in. So, it really depends on how long you guys need to review them, because we really need for you to take a good look at them, if this is how we plan to proceed. So, if, if we want to set a deadline, I can communicate that to anyone who comes in, or we can maybe promote that somehow, that this will be our deadline, I just need that direction. So, if it'll take you a couple of days, or maybe you want it that Thursday prior to the meeting, that might be good. Okay. Okay, so I'll communicate.
As long as I have them all by Friday, because Friday night and over the weekend is when I do all my council stuff.
Okay. Okay, so we can communicate that, and then I will forward them, and so you, you can assume you won't get any after that deadline, 5:00 PM Thursday before.
Okay.
All right, so, is that how you want to proceed, and if so, is everyone comfortable with that?
Move along.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we didn't get any information from the attorney, Gail, for the executive session?
Correct, mayor, we don't have updated information to hold that executive session.
Okay. So, ten point O, routine business. Ten point one, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, the Port of Houston rail spur, City of Seabrook CIP projects, economic development updates, and any CI, and any City of Seabrook grant administration projects.
All right, mayor and council, we've got some upcoming meetings, not a lot of action taking place since our last council meeting, so Open Space is meeting later this week. Just as a quick update, we are, we've touched base with the engineer that's doing the grading and drainage plan for the Crowthers projects. Our plan is to get that, review it internally, go back to Open Space, get some approvals, and then hopefully, possibly on April sixteenth, that will be back before you. Planning and zoning meets on April eighteenth, and EDC on the eleventh, so no new business there. Transportation projects, this is a sneak peek at some 3D renderings of our upcoming landscaping project. So, as you recall, the Green Ribbon Program was let here in the end of March, and it'll be kicking off in April, so we'll see some additional traffic cones up and down our frontage roads, as additional fill, the riprap, and then ultimately, the landscaping beds that will go in underneath the underpasses. So, this is a rendering up here at NASA in 146. The Repsdorf intersection has also some items that will get touched. This project also does have the bollards, so the nautical themed bollards will go in with this, in addition to the landscaping, the riprap, and some trees that will be in different areas on the north, the south beds along the MSC wall. So, a lot going on. The project is anticipated to be complete within ninety days, so there'll be a lot of activity going on. We'll keep you updated as the contractor comes on board, and hopefully, we'll have more of a timeline and phasing. This is redundant slide, I've reached out to the Williams Brothers that's handling the 146 project, so you can see that they've set the piers there at Red Bluff, or the base, so I'll try to get some additional information on when pouring will happen, and those lanes will start to really take place on that project. CIP updates, thrown out an email earlier this week on some other topics, but this week was actual startup, where we had some materials coming through the plant, and so, all is going well at the startup phase of this. Wanted to touch, touch base a little bit on our other CIP projects. We've got, we've got our Pine Gully Force Main Boring, that's got surveying in progress. So, we've got an elevated line that runs across the Toddville Bridge, we're working on, in addition to lift station, main improvements, those are over by Pier, Pier Eight on Toddville, got surveying in progress on that. Red Oak Acres, you guys deliberated that tonight, and then also in the background, we're working on a seascape waterline project, so we've got surveying in, in progress on that. Old 146 interconnect, so this is an active project that Public Works is working with our engineer right now, we're hopefully in the final design stages, and some layout decisions that we've got to make, that's along Old 146. This will give us an interconnection with the City of Pasadena on Old 146. We were contacted on W24, that we may have some waterline adjustments there at Old 146 and 146, in connection with the project that's going back to La Porte, so we're waiting some, for some additional information. WW19, our Main Street demo, you recently approved that proposal with Cobb Finley, so engineering's in progress for the demo and plans for wastewater plant on Main Street, and then tonight, your EMS and EOC proposal with the engineering, or the architect firm, we'll get started on that. Also, approval tonight on the NASA Fiber Loop, and then we're anticipating next council meeting to come back to you for the Pelican Bay Pool. I think we've got the assessment report that should be about ready, that we can put that on the next agenda. Grants, this is just a, a recall of the ones that we talked about at the last update, but again, we've got quite a bit out. We are anticipating, I think it's Thursday this week on that last grant, Harris County Partnership, you approved a resolution for East Meyer, so that total project is estimated at eight million. If we were to get that partnership program, the four million is reflective of what that 50-50 partnership is. So, hopefully, at the end of this week, I can let you know if we've been selected for that grant. Any questions?
I, I have a couple questions. On the freeway, are they going to have the stars on the Red Bluff also, or is it just for NASA?
We do not have it in the plans, we had to squeeze getting those designs in.
Oh, I really love those.
And they're going to use the round, so there's not going to have the same column sets that we have at the other ones.
What about planting? Are they going to have any room for plants?
So, right now, the landscaping project touches where the detention ponds are on the right, and then where the Weber camp is right now, that'll eventually go away, and there'll be a whole reforestation.
Okay.
Then, on the other side of Red Bluff, we were actually talking today, we need to start working on the next landscaping, so it kind of cuts off right there.
By Gian, going towards Gian?
I'm sorry.
Are you talking about like on the other side by?
Like, as you go towards the subway complex, there's not landscaping on that detention.
Oh, okay.
It goes up to that detention pond on the other side of that intersection, and that's where the cutoff happens.
Okay, I was just curious. And also, what about the sound study for Red Oak Acres? Has that been done?
It did. So, the ambient noise study was conducted after y'all approved it, I think that following week. There was one noise device that was altered, I don't, in the middle of the night, so they had to go back and do another 24-hour. So, they're merging all that information together. I don't have the draft yet, but as soon as we have it, I'll reach out to those residents.
Also, for the next agenda, next meeting, I'd like to put these two items on the agenda. To propose to amend ordinance section 65-8 to number the allowable special events permits to eight per year. As, you know, the current ordinance has a broad interpretation by the designee. And then secondly, I'd like to propose to do a mini mural project of pelicans for local businesses. I had emailed you the, the artist. And fifty percent funded by the city, and then fifty percent by the businesses, is what I'd like to propose. And that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question, on the beds that are under the overpass at Main, who maintains those?
We will, when they go in, Tech Stop will handle it for 12 months, and then after that, we will have to look at a maintenance contract.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I hear motion? Oh, no, no, no. Future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next meeting is scheduled for April sixteenth at 6:00 PM.
Okay, I have a question for an agenda item. So, I've had a couple people that go to Merlion, and they wanted to know if they could do a proclamation for Andrew Lowbeck, the chef that passed away, and had, they don't know how to do it, and so I'm asking kind of for them. Do I just talk to you about it? Okay, thanks.
Give me some information. Anyone else? Do I hear motion?
[inaudible]
All in favor?
[inaudible]
Seven twenty.